Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the school committee meeting on this Tuesday, December 8, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and note that a small group of us are in studio, social distancing, but this meeting is being broadcast live on WCAT's Facebook page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is the public comment. If anyone from the public would like to participate, I would ask that you identify yourself with your name and address. And I am hearing no one, so I think it is okay to move on. Thank you. Tonight, I actually am really pleased to announce that we are being joined by our student advisors. This evening, we are being joined by Logan and Samantha, who were student advisors last year, so welcome back. And we do have two new members, Sophia Callahan and Maggie Lyon, so welcome to the meeting this evening. It's really great to have you all here.
I know, it is.
Would you guys like to take this time to introduce yourself and maybe tell us a little bit about you? We can start with Logan.
Hi, I'm Logan. As mentioned before, I'm a senior. I'm on the soccer and track teams at the school. I'm part of the youth action team and I am really excited for this year to work with the school committee.
That's great, thank you. Samantha?
Hi, everyone. My name's Samantha. At the school, I'm part of Social Awareness and Interact Club, so I play a large role in that and I'm also very excited to be here tonight.
Thank you. And our two newest members, Sophia?
Hi, I'm Sophia. I'm a junior. I'm a part of the dance team and lacrosse and I'm also part of the Social Awareness Club with Sam and I'm excited for this year, too.
Wonderful. Well, welcome Sophia. And last but not least, Maggie?
I am also part of UConn Best buddies. I'm on the track and field team at cross country and I'm super excited for this year.
That's great. Well, welcome. We're really glad to have you as well. Do you guys have, how are you guys doing? I mean, I'm just kinda wondering how things are going this year for you. Are you all participating in the remote model or do you do the hybrid?
So, I'm doing the hybrid and I think things are going pretty well, you know, as well as they can, you know, at the high school. And I do have brothers at the middle school, so from what I've heard, everything, you know, everyone's, you know, getting used to the new normal and, you know, getting into the rhythm there. So, I think, you know, in the majority of my classes, you know, where, from what I've heard, right on track, like, or maybe a teeny bit behind where we're supposed to be in the curriculum, but I think that, you know, teachers, I can tell they've put in, you know, a lot, a lot of hard work and they're doing a great job of, like, moving us along, but still being very aware of kind of everything that's, you know, going on right now and the safety.
That's great. Thank you for sharing. Anybody else have any comments? Do you guys all participate in the hybrid?
Similar to what Sam said, but I'm also in the hybrid and I've heard from multiple teachers about staying on pace with where they were last year, whether they were, like, combining note packets to connect ideas that they normally would spread out over more days, but they're still giving us lots of practice like we need and they're trying their best to get us to continue to learn as normally as possible. I think the hybrid model's been really nice, getting to go into school twice a week and just getting to see everyone, or half of everyone, but still just getting in there and trying to be about the new normal.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. Sophia or Maggie, how are you guys doing?
I'm good. I'm a part of the hybrid models as well and I think that it's going well. From being on the remote track for that one week, it's definitely shown me that the hybrid, I like that a lot better because we're able to see our teachers at least twice a week and be able to communicate with them in person rather than just through emailing or through Zoom.
Right.
Yeah, so I also do the hybrid model and I think that it's going as well, obviously, as it could. I do think that I'm so, like, learning at the pace I would be learning at anyway and a lot of the teachers have been super, like, comfortable with moving things around, like, if you need, like, they're really flexible and I think that's definitely a good quality to have in the situation where no one really knows what's gonna happen.
Right, exactly. Well, I'm really glad to hear some really good positive feedback from you all. Does anyone from the committee have any questions for our student advisors? Yes, Colleen?
Thank you, Amy, and a personal welcome to Samantha, Sophia, Logan, and Maggie. So, I just had a sort of a tip-off question for you guys to think about and maybe you've already thought about it, but what is sort of one idea or issue that you'd like to bring forth to the school committee this year, something that we can collaborate on, something that we may not know about, that you'd like to make us aware about, or something that we could just discuss sort of in further depth? Anyone? Maggie?
I think something...
I think something that we could definitely work with you on would be kind to touch on what Sophia said about the one week that we went remote, just doing our best to stay safe and healthy and allow everyone that is impacted to attend for it as we all just explain how preferable it is for us.
Thank you, Logan.
I agree with what Logan said. Oh, sorry, Sam.
Oh, no, you can go, it's totally fine.
Okay. I agree with what Logan said, especially, I do feel like sometimes we kind of find out things, like, late as students and I feel like it would be nice to be kind of more informed, like, not obviously right away because everything's so new and we're all trying to figure it out, but I feel like my mom will be like, "Oh, like, yeah, this is happening" and then, like, I'm like, "Oh, really? Like, I didn't know that." And then it just kind of gets a little confusing and lost.
Great, thank you Maggie.
I mean, going back to what Logan said a bit, you know, I did try to, like, get a little bit of feedback so I wouldn't only be, like, you know, speaking, you know, for myself to you guys about the hybrid model, but something that I had heard is when we did go full remote that one week, things were kind of thrown off, like, I mean, of course they're gonna be thrown off, but just a little bit because of, you know, the fact that teachers had, like, split up their work for Cohort A and Cohort B, so when we were supposed to meet Monday, they were kind of like, "Well, what am I supposed to do when I have half the kids on a different page than the other half?" So, maybe just, you know, we could be going full remote, you know, sometime in the future, we don't know, but maybe coming up with, you know, some sort of plan for that, like, would we do a more hybrid model, like, remotely? Would we bring everyone together and kind of how do we kind of juggle kind of the, what teachers are gonna do with the curriculum when they have, you know, two halves who are kind of on different pages? So, that was just something I had heard.
That's a great point made. Thank you Samantha. Sophia, do you have anything to add or do you wanna think about it? I mean, this is an open-ended question, you know, I think, Mike, you had spoke to about this and we've, we've always talked about our advisors or liaisons really trying to bring sort of issues that are important to you to the committee, you know? We love to hear all of, you know, the wonderful things that are going on in, in the high school and in the district in terms of sports and activities, but we really wanna get into, like, sort of the bulk of your sort of experience as a student, right? And then try to enhance that and help solve, you know, issues and problems and bring them forth to the administration. So, this is an open-ended discussion and question, so your input is highly valued. Thanks, guys.
Just, like, going back to what Sam was saying, I feel like that one week of remote, a lot of things got lost in communication and it was, I don't know, I had a lot of questions that weren't answered about whether we would still have asynchronous work or if we were just gonna have homework every night and whether we would be still separating in the cohorts for Zooms. So, just like some more communication with our teachers would probably be better. And I know they didn't really have much time to plan things, but just to figure out, like, have a solidified plan in the future if we had to go full remote would be better.
Yeah, I would say to all of you, don't, anything is something we should hear, whether we didn't have time or whatever, you know, that's the important thing. We need to understand what didn't work for you and then we'll, we'll figure it out. So, don't ever feel guilty about, I know they're busy already, so I don't wanna bother them with some other question because that's the only way that it's gonna get better if we hear from you and the teachers and the parent.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, Doug? So, to the students, I wanna thank you all for being here. It's much appreciated and, and I think you can see by the interest in our questions that we have for you, how interested we are in, in hearing from you and hearing your perspective and about your experiences. You know, please also be thinking about, you know, you are the voice for other students as well, right? And so, you're student leaders, you intersect with so many different students, you know, and if there are other students whose information or questions you would like to bring forward, you could do that as well, right? And, and you don't have to wait for a faculty, excuse me, a school committee meeting to do that. You could reach out by email to any of the school committee members and certainly to, to myself or any of the district leaders, right? And so, we would love nothing more than to hear from you, right? And it's kind of like a highlight of our day to hear from you all, to hear how you're doing, so, just something to think about, but thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you so much for being here tonight and, you know, to, to add on to what everyone else was saying, you know, the perspective and the information that you guys can provide to us is extremely valuable and, like Doug said, we are here, you know, to reach out via email at any time and I'm just really excited to have you guys start off tonight, involved in our meetings and continuing on because I think that you can bring a lot to the table and please feel free to reach out and to also share whatever it is that you think is important for us to hear in the meetings moving forward. So, thank you again very much, we're, it's, it's, it's great to have you. Okay, moving on, consent agenda?
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of October 14, 2020, school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the November 5, 2020, November 12, 2020, and November 19, 2020, school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meetings as presented.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
And Dr. Burns. And I'm guessing Mr. Liakos isn't yet.
He actually joined us and then he went away.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, it looks like he's on, he's just not in front of the camera right now.
Is that his ceiling fan?
Yeah, exactly. Lovely, too.
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Oh, and now he's gone. We'll get through this. Okay, so I think he may be gone. Business, business items. Christine?
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight you have the financial report in front of you. It's actual expenditures through November 30, 2020. We're almost through the second half of the, of the second quarter of fiscal '20. I'll just point out two items on the first report that we're keeping a close eye on. It's the special ed tuition line for out-of-district tuitions and contracted services for all the expenditures for remote learning. As you'll see, they're negative right now, but we're, we're monitoring that and we'll have some transfers in the future to, to reconcile those lines. But right now, those are the items that kind of stand out on that first report. The second report is by school and then we get into our grants, which are on track, mostly for salaries for paraprofessionals and the special ed department, some ESSO grants, which have to be spent by the end of December, but those are on track. The next report is the revolving accounts, which I think we've been talking about for the past couple of months, that we're, we're just watching the preschool tuition line because we encumbered all the salaries, that's why you'll see the negative, but we're receiving the tuition payments every month. And also Wakefield Academy, it's much smaller this year due to, we can only have 80 students enrolled this year, so we're keeping an eye on that. And our circuit breaker, we've only received one payment, we received that quarterly, so we'll receive another payment by December, so that will also help with our out-of-district tuitions. I know that was a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions?
Just, um, on the special ed tuition line, the negative 295, so the circuit breaker adjustments is what we will see as we continue on monthly?
So, we can do a transfer to move, but what's important, though, is those are tuitions that are encumbered for the year, but we might, if days change or if enrollment changes, that, you know, it, that's almost worst-case scenario. Those are the most days, so sometimes you'll see some unencumbering, some liquidations of that, but, but right now, that's, it's a little high, but, you know, for obvious reasons, we've had some increases in that.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions for Christine? Do you have the...
So, then I think we go to the payroll reports or is NRT next on the agenda or payroll?
Yeah, NRT, yep.
So, we have a MOU on the agenda tonight that we've been discussing for the past couple of weeks with the finance subcommittee. It's similar to the MOU that we agreed to in the spring. Basically, our transportation provider is North Reading Transportation. We have a contract with them to provide transportation. We have seven in-district buses and two Mecca buses. So, the first 10 days of school, they did not transport, so we had to have an MOU about the amount of money to pay for those first 10 days and if we do go into a remote model versus whether Wakefield decides to go into remote or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts goes into remote. So, we have three different percentages in the MOU. For the first 10 days, we'll only pay 50% of our contracted amount. If the superintendent of the school committee calls the remote model, then that would be 78% of the contract versus if the Commonwealth closed, it would also be 50%. The only caveat to the 50% if the Commonwealth closed is that the, the vendor could not guarantee that he would not have to lay off any drivers. But again, he is now receiving some CARES Act money, so it's, the CARES Act is helping him with his employee retention tax credit, so it's helping him that if we do go remote, that he has some unemployment benefits so he can keep his staff on, but after December 31st, all of that expires. And the reason that's important to point out is that we might have to renegotiate in January if the CARES Act doesn't get extended and we do go into a remote in the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
I know we've been talking at the subcommittee level for a couple of weeks about this and we had our attorney who negotiated for quite some time with this vendor. Actually, the, the vendor has quite a lot of districts in the Commonwealth that he, he's a vendor for, so he's been doing this with quite a lot of vendors and we're, we're seeing similar percentages across, across those vendors.
Great.
But again, it's very similar to what we agreed to in the spring and it's basically, this is in case we have to use it. Hopefully, we don't, but this is just, though, if we do go remote, then we can automatically use this and we know it, we'll have to spend.
All right, absolutely. Does anyone have any questions for Christine? Yes, Greg?
Hi, first of all, apologies for logging in late, I was having inexplicable technical difficulty, so, thanks, you're doing fine, Mike, for helping me.
Happens to everyone.
It might not be a question for Christine, it might be for Doug, but I, as I was looking through the contract, I was, I was wondering if, if thought has been given to flexibility around busing after the end of the school year, if, if, you know, the educational leadership of any, any of the schools decides that some cohort of students, you know, has time to make up, learning time make up because of the, you know, extraordinary circumstances that we've, that we've gone through as a district at the Commonwealth this year. If students have to make up, make up time, make up learning, need, participation in any number of ways, where there, there are ways to build that, those kinds of contingencies into the contract for, you know, whatever extension is needed for student participation.
So, I, I think that the question is layered in there, but I, the short answer, Greg, is, is yes, you know, but I don't know that that would be addressed in this particular NRT agreement.
Okay, so that might be a future, a future addendum?
Correct.
Right, because...
Another conversation with NRT, okay.
This contract is for the school year only, right?
Yes, for the, okay, so the contours of this end with the end of the school year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Any other questions for Christine or Doug? Nope? Do we have a motion?
We do. Move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement between Wakefield School District and the NRT Bus, Inc., for fiscal year 2021 as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, now I think we have the payrolls for November?
Yep.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants 20 and 22 as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vayer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
One more.
Yep, one more.
And we are so fortunate to be able to accept a gift tonight and I believe Doug has a few words to say.
Yes, and so, a, a little bit about the gift that we are receiving tonight, you know, as we all know, the pandemic has been difficult for our schools and certainly for the, the families that we serve here in Wakefield. Tonight, I'd like to tell you about one bright spot that we were not expecting and, and this donation will be helping both schools and many, many of our families. I'm pleased to announce that the Trachtenberg family has made another significant donation to the Wakefield Public Schools, which brings the total gifts in 2020, from last spring until now, to $250,000. This is, this is a gift and a number that, that, of which we generally don't see gifts this size at the public school level. You know, an original gift was made in the spring that totaled $100,000 and, and that gift helped to support technology, remote instruction, and food service. And a portion of the spring gift was earmarked to help families by paying off outstanding lunch bills for all families in, in the town of Wakefield, without exception or without condition. This evening, we accept another gift for $120,750 plus $29,000 and change, which brings a total up to $150,000. The $29,250 gift was made to PTOs and that is earmarked to support our teachers and there'll be more information forthcoming on, on that gift. But this evening's gift of $120,000 is, is going to support our teachers' intervention services in regard to counseling and, and reading at the elementary level, as well as new technology for remote learning. And so, we are just so indebted and grateful with the kindness and the generosity that the Trattenberg, Trachtenberg family has, has shown to students, faculty, and staff of the Wakefield Public Schools. We really can't thank them enough, so thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have a motion?
We do. Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $120,750 from the Silk Title Company funds to be used towards student intervention, teacher support, and technology needs.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Vayer?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
I threw you, didn't I?
Yes, we were listening.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Ms. Guida? Yes. Mr. Boudreau?
I think we should mix up the O and B all the time.
Yeah, I know.
Yes.
Dr. Burns? Yeah. And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is chair comments. I don't have anything specific to say, but I, you know, after that particular gift, I really would like to acknowledge the family and, and just their generous, unbelievable donation to the Wakefield Public Schools. You know, this, as Doug said, will, this donation will directly help students and teachers and we are forever grateful for that, so thank you so much. With that, I can hand it off to Superintendent Lyons.
Thank you very much. And so, I'd just like to give a very quick update. We've sent email and letters to the community on Sunday evening and again on Monday evening. We've had a few new cases. We have a student case and a faculty, an additional faculty case at the, at the Dolbear to, to report and, and I, I've shared in, in my last week's correspondence that we were a little worried last week, we saw an uptick at the Doyle and the Doyle is a small school and there are kind of our youngest children, right? Their ages three and four and, and in that space, it is a, it is hands-on work. The children do an amazing job wearing their masks, but they're still, in regard to social distancing, they still get very close, they still get close with one another and they often have to be reminded and so, but we have seen a little bit of an uptick with some staff members over at Doyle and we were a little worried last... and we were a little worried last week. We did have to scale back one classroom and we're kind of watching the numbers cautiously, not only at Doyle, but in all of our schools. But it looks like this week Doyle is, is on the mend and, and we're kind of getting back into the swing of things, so that's positive. And so, but as, as Doyle is on the mend and, and people are getting back to what we hope is, is a more consistent schedule, we've seen some new cases at the Dolbeer, right? And so that we know that the numbers each week are going up and we, we're just paying very close attention. And our ability to stay in our hybrid plans is, again, really predicated on our ability to do contact tracing. So we will be updating our data and our numbers to add the new adult, new staff case and new student case at the Dolbeer and we will be sending out an update tomorrow on that. And so the total number of cases that we currently have, from September until now, is 46 and the total number of staff cases is 12. So that's just a change of, of really one and one, one student, one staff member from last night's correspondence. But more to follow. And so we're also been notified that the Mass Department of Public Health is going to be adopting the new CDC guidance on quarantine and quarantining. And so just to be clear, the difference, there's a difference between students that are COVID-positive. If a student or a staff member is COVID-positive, they're placed in what they call isolation. And when you are a close contact, you are placed in what they call quarantine. And so it used to be a standard 14 days, that was the standard, right? If you, you were a close contact, came within less than six feet for 15 minutes or more in a 24-hour period, you were considered a close contact if someone tested positive. The, the referral that was made from, at, a few weeks ago was that you needed to quarantine and the recommendation is that you be tested after four or five days. The CDC changed that a few weeks ago to say that you could scale back from 14 to eight days with conditions. And so they've, they've adjusted that again. So the new numbers are seven days, 10 days, and 14 days. And each one has a series of conditions. And so I'm not going to go through all of the conditions because it can be very confusing. But I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that we, in the Wakefield Public Schools, will be adopting this new guidance and, and we will be sending this information out to the community tomorrow, right? And so I'm also very pleased to report that we are going to have COVID testing in Wakefield, which is really, really positive. And so, and the, the goal, we, we have, the goal is to test 1,000 people a day. So it's not just for teachers, students, these are for the community. Everyone in the community of Wakefield, right? The tests are going to be at, testing is going to be done by Cataldo Ambulance and it's going to be done at the Voke, right, up the hill here from the high school. And so, and it's going to be nine to five. And the dates are December 13th, December 19th, and December 20th. And the plan is to be open from nine to five during those days and to, to test 1,000 people per day, which is fantastic. Again, it's a great opportunity for people that are looking to get tested and to hopefully do it in a more timely manner, both to get results back, but also so that you don't have to wait in what has become very long lines and a lot of this stopped the spread in larger testing sites. So this was in the newspapers, this was announced last night at town council, was in the Wakefield item today, and we're just kind of reinforcing that message now. The Board of Health, so this is being coordinated by Ruth Clay, the administrator for our Board of Health. And she is asking everyone to pre-register and that information should be forthcoming tomorrow. And we will get that out as soon as we get it as well. And so that's it for my remarks right now. I'll have some remarks at, at the end. But at this point, I would like to turn it over to Tom Bankard to talk a little bit about fine and performing arts and the work that he and his staff have done in the fall, but also plan on doing in the winter. Tom?
Thank you, Doug. Thank you for inviting me here, school committee members. It's good to be here again. So as Doug said, I just want to review the fall in regards to extracurricular activities in the, in the fine and performing arts department and then look forward to what we're, what we're starting and proposing for the winter months as, as we enter into the winter seasons. So in the fall, we ran a, about a five-week marching band season, much, obviously much less intense and smaller than we normally do. We had 88% participation of the original roster, so we had held sign-ups in April. And from April till we started the end of September, we ended up with 88% of those, of those students, which was a good number. That was a concern that we had, that kids wouldn't participate because of, you know, feeling comfortable and families feeling comfortable, but that, that was a, a great participation rate. And I'm very proud to say that at, at no point in the season, there was, there was no transmission of the virus or any close contacts that came from the marching band season. And the participation of those kids, we were very, ran it very well. With health and safety, we're always at number one and concerned of all of us. So my staff did a great job of promoting social distancing and, and the mask-wearing and, and hand sanitizer and all the things that we know keep us safe in this pandemic. So very proud to, to say that we were, had a very safe season. And at this point, we're just producing a video. We had a final performance that we videotaped. So we were producing a video for parents and for students with, with everything that we did in that month. Right now, theater is, is running, they are rehearsing a production of A Christmas Carol. At the high school, all rehearsals have been, all rehearsals have been on Zoom. And they are having a live performance next Friday, December 18th, 7:30. And then they will have video on demand available from December 19th to December 27th. Tickets for the live performance and the video on demand are available on www.wakefieldtheater.org. Will Carboniaris has done a great job getting the kids involved, not only the actors, but also those students that focus on set design and costumes and the other, all the other things that are part of the theater. They've still been able to work with that even in these, you know, virtual, virtual settings. So the performance next week should be, is definitely one to check out. And also last week, we had our high school Tri-M Honor Society inductions. We ran those inductions over Zoom and, and welcomed 20 new members to the Wakefield High School chapter of Tri-M Music Honor Society. So as far as moving forward, now we're looking into the winter months, into starting winter percussion and winter color guard. Obviously with some restrictions and some changes and thinking about what we did in the fall for marching band and moving it forward into, into these winter seasons. We usually, for example, we usually include eighth graders. We use that as their first experience into the high school performing arts program. We are not going to be inviting eighth graders for this year. And we also usually rehearse in other buildings in the district. We use the Woodville, we've used the Walton in the past, we've used the Galvin at times. We're pretty much nomads. We kind of just go wherever we can get space to rehearse, but we're gonna, we're gonna avoid using any other buildings. We're gonna use the high school cafeteria a little bit more often and then also I'm working with, with Brendan Kent on getting whatever field house time is available after all the basketball practices and everything that's going on in there. But we're gonna keep, keep everything contained into the high school. Both of these, you know, are, should be for pretty obvious reasons. Keeping, keeping cohorts separate, not bringing the eighth graders in and then also just keeping all the high school students working and practicing in the high school. And we're looking to start this at the, in the new year. So we're gonna take a solid three weeks to prepare, just like we did for the marching band season. Make sure we have all our ducks in a row, everything is done safely and that we can be prepared for any issues that may come up along the way. And then after, so along with this, the next steps that we're looking at, my staff and I are looking at starting, trying to find a way to start jazz, both at the middle school and the high school. I'm getting a, getting a decent number of phone calls and emails from parents asking about that, especially in the middle school level, when they'll be able to, to start rehearsing, rehearsing jazz ensemble and, and when and how that could work. So Mike Morell, middle school band director, and I are, are working on a plan to, to propose to, to Doug and how to do this safely and, and give the kids the opportunities that they're asking for. So those are the, those are the two that are on the horizon as we move into the new year.
Thank you, Tom. Brendan, can you share a bit about athletics?
Absolutely. Nice to see everyone. It's always great to be on the school committee. First off, just want to give a shout out to our student advisors, Samantha, Maggie, Sophia, and Logan. They did a great job. Got some great student athletes there. Logan was captain of our soccer team, was also Little Six League All-Star this past fall, so all four are great kids and getting some good stuff done on the fields. So this past fall, I, to be honest, I thought it was a success. I got a lot of feedback, positive feedback from the kids. Obviously, it was very different than any sports season we've ever had and probably like any we will have in the future. There were no state tournaments, nothing like that. The sports that we did play were boys and girls soccer, boys and girls cross country, field hockey, and golf. You know, I, I mentioned in the paper a few weeks ago that it, you know, this season wasn't about wins and losses, championships or anything like that. It was, it was about getting the kids out and doing something that they love to do, which I think we accomplished this past fall. Having said that, we did have two teams that have finished undefeated. So I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to them. Our golf team finished undefeated, with an undefeated record, co-champs. Also, our boys cross country team seems like, you know, a broken record. It seems like every year they're undefeated champs, but they also had a great season. Also, I'd be remiss, we have school committee member Mike Boudreau, his daughter Abby was MVP of the Middle Six League. Had a great year and was just recently, in the past week, named a Boston Herald All-Scholastic, so really some great, yeah.
She gets all her athletic talent from her mother.
Yeah, there we go, yeah. So, you know, all, all in all, you know, it was a very challenging year, season this past fall, but I thought it was a great success. I told our coaches how proud I, I was of them. Really holding the line, it was difficult. Making sure our kids, parents, spectators, everyone was following safety protocols, but I thought it was a community effort. Everyone did an awesome job, from the parents, to the kids, the coaches, administration. So I just want to say kudos to everybody. Moving forward, so the seasons ahead of us are a little different now. Winter's gotten moved. The winter, traditional winter season now is gonna start December 14th. It's gonna run December 14th to February 15th. There's gonna be a quote-unquote "fall two" season for the sports in the fall that got postponed. That "fall two" season is gonna run from February 22nd to April 25th. And then the traditional spring season, which would usually start right around St. Patrick's Day, is gonna run from April 26th to July 3rd. A few weeks ago, the state approved winter sports. After that, went to the MI2B. The Sports Medicine and COVID-19 Task Force Committees met and then the Board of Directors met. Ultimately, they approved some sports, some winter sports of competition, others from, others they did not approve. The sports that we are gonna have this winter are boys and girls hockey, boys and girls basketball, gymnastics, and right now, swimming is kind of up in the air. The Middle Six League for swimming has decided to postpone to "fall two" because most of the schools in the Middle Six League could not get access to the swimming pools. However, Wakefield, we're in a unique situation. Our swim team co-ops with Linfield, which is a whole other discussion that Superintendent Lyons and Principal Cloud and I are, are having. They compete in the Cape Ann League. Originally, the Cape Ann League was looking to possibly postpone as well for the same reason. Now there's discussions of maybe having a season. Actually, it sounds like they are gonna have a season, so that's just another thing that we gotta kind of circle back and discuss as administration, how that's gonna work. But in the past few weeks, been very busy trying to book facilities for all of our programs. On the basketball end, it's, it's a little difficult because usually we use a bunch of the schools. The Galvin Middle School usually hosts most of our Sub-Var C teams. That's off limit, off limits Monday through Friday because it's been used as classroom space. So we're trying to make do with what we can in the field house, as Tom Bankard mentioned. The teams, all the teams are gonna be playing a 10-game schedule, knock on wood, hopefully make it through. All the games are gonna be similar to the fall, to the best of our abilities. The league is scheduling them on, on school days, so it'll be Saturday mornings and holidays. The exception to that would be hockey is, is a difficult one because you're at the mercy of when you can get ice time. So it'll be Saturday hockey games, but there will also most likely be hockey games during, I know there'll be hockey games during the week as well. VAR C teams will be limited to three practices a week. JV teams will be limited to two practices a week. There'll be no transportation, just like the fall. Obviously, with sports being indoors now, it's a little more complicated. There'll be no locker room use unless they have to use it, in which case there'll be a 10, 10-person cap in there. I know for hockey, for example, the kids are gonna have to show up in their pads, just like when they're in little sneakers, walking with their sneakers and, and sticks and be ready to go. I know the, probably the, the topic that's been kept, thrown around the most throughout the state is the Middle Six League and, as far as I know, all the other leagues in, in the state have decided on no spectators. I know that that's definitely a hot topic throughout the state right now. It was discussed this morning. We had a Middle Six League Athletic Directors meeting, which we discussed, you know, what, what does this look like? From a league perspective, it, I gotta be honest, it sounds like it's a hard no right now. I know that there are, right now, concerns from other school districts outside the Middle Six League. Some school districts are now actually deciding on no winter sports. So that's, you know, something that I think is concerning. Not, not to, I'm not trying to put a fear buck in anybody's ear, but I think people are concerned that there might be a domino effect of once one school cancels, another school cancels. So, you know, I think right now, the primary concern is just making sure that kids have some sort of season. But I, I know that that is something that's being discussed at the state level, across the board, across the league. Also, I've heard the governor released information today about scaling back. I've heard out on social media, there's hearsay rumors that they're gonna be releasing more information later this week from the EEA about spectators. I'm not sure if that's true or not. That's just what's kind of being floating around out on the internet right now. So anyways, that's a kind of summary of what we can look forward to for this winter season. Some of the sports that got postponed again, wrestling got postponed to the spring outdoors, which I've never seen before, so we'll, we'll see about that. Dancing chair also got postponed. Swimming, as I mentioned, is kind of up in the air right now. We'll see what happens with that. That's kind of where things are at right now. I'm sure there's probably some questions or comments, but working hard to get ready.
Thank you, Brendan. Yeah, lots of information and you did a great job providing us with all the details. Clearly, there are many unknowns that we're all dealing with at this point. But it does sound like we have a somewhat solid plan to look into and, you know, anything obviously can change at any point. Does anyone have any questions for Brendan? Or Tom?
I just have a comment. You know, Brendan, my initial reaction when I heard no, no spectators was a little bit of like, come on. You know, that, that's not where people are getting sick. But the more you think about it, you know, we're trying to keep our schools open and we don't want to have people, all kinds of people in our school buildings. And, and I say all kinds of people, I mean adults from, from both communities, right? And, and your point And, um, and your point of this is about trying to get kids to play the sports they love and it's got to be about that first and it's going to be a pain for parents. And I, like, I just, I get it. I'm a, I'm a hockey mom myself and I'm having that issue with my son, you know, outside, um, of the high school. But the reality is we're going to, we're making sacrifices all day long. And if this is about our kids having a season where they can play ten games, let's all just take a breath and remind ourselves that that's the most important thing happening here, even when it feels like, gosh, why can't we just go watch our kid play? Um, so I appreciate the way you positioned that because I think, um, it's important for all of us to just kind of remember first and foremost, this is about the kids getting to play. So, thanks for the update.
Yeah, Brendan, if I can jump in, so even though I joked earlier about Abby's athletic skill, I did play a little bit. And I'm not sure, I once remember looking up and looking at my parents the entire time I played any sport at all. I think the kids are going to be absolutely fine. It's the parents that have the issue and, you know, it's, it's all about them at the end of the day. And I'm sure they'll all have a real positive experience. And they were all happy to do something this fall, understanding it was different. But boy, they were so happy to be out there. So kudos for that. And I can only imagine your email and phone must be ringing off the hook with, uh, commentary about no fans. So best of luck with that as well. So appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Colleen.
I'm muted, I'm muted. Um, uh, thanks Brendan. So, um, on that and, and just because I, I have a hockey background or experience. But, um, so right now, uh, we have no spectators in the, in the Valley League as well for some of the Valley League runs, rinks on our youth level. And, um, some parents, um, gather in their cars at like seven in the morning and watch Live Barn. I didn't know if, if that's an option, you know, and I, I feel like I, I feel bad not speaking to basketball or the other activities and sports and I just don't know the availability. But I know that a lot of rinks do have that option. So is that something that we might be able to tap into?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's, that was something we discussed this morning on our A D's meeting was how each community is going to, um, make, you know, live stream the games. Uh, I have to give WCAT a shout out. Uh, Ryan Boynton, his crew did an awesome job this past fall. Um, all of our games that were at Landry and Field, they livestreamed, um, so our fans could watch at home. Um, so I've already reached out to Ryan. Um, he said he's going to work with his crew to do as many of our games, um, again this winter. Um, but obviously they can only be at one place at a time. Um, and we might have, it might be days that we're going to have a basketball and hockey game, um, in the same, same day, at the same time. So we as a league are trying to get as many resources as possible. Uh, Live Barn was one that was discussed. Um, I know there's talks of huddle, you know, some of our teams use huddle, possibly getting a live, if they can go live. Um, some schools mentioned, um, certain, if you get a YouTube, kind of you can livestream on YouTube. Um, so we're doing the best we can, um, to try to get, uh, all of our games livestreamed. I know some of the A D's in the league are, are hockey people. Um, some of them are actually hockey coaches. And they, they mentioned that one of the issues, some of the hockey rinks, um, kind of have some touchy wifi connections sometimes. They're like fortresses, so that might be a dilemma that we, we face. But, uh, as a league, we're, we're going to try to livestream as many games as possible, um, at all of our locations. So that even if the games, let hypothetically, like, let's say Burlington, you know, Burlington would be livestreaming it. So both Burlington parents and Wakefield parents can watch. Um, so, uh, that is a goal of ours as, as a league.
Great, that, that's fantastic. And, and, and just to sort of, um, um, piggyback on what Suzie said, I mean, I think that just allowing or enabling the, the kids to play as much as possible and as safely as possible is our goal. And, um, and, and Mike also, you know, like, you know, they love to hear the crowd, but this is, this is a, a different year. And, um, I think that our, especially our high school students have that basic understanding, right? When they, when they get out there and they're just excited to be with their teammates that are playing. And we appreciate any effort that you can do, um, at any level, whether it be activities, um, or sports. Um, you push that, you know, sort of experience out to the parents. So, um, looking forward to whatever we can watch. Tom also, uh, really looking forward to the, the eighteenth performance of the Christmas Carol as well. This is, these are things that sort of reengage us, right? You know, into community and the students. So I appreciate all the efforts for, for both of you. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Colleen. Any other questions for Brendan or Tom?
Greg.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Thanks. They had one for Brendan and one for Tom. Um, so, uh, yeah, thank you, Brendan, for giving us a great.
Greg, you just went unmuted.
Sorry, apologies. Uh, but thank you for giving us a great summary. Um, so just for, uh, think, uh, this conversation from the point of view of a layperson. Um, and, uh, you know, the difference between the fall sports, which were, uh, you know, largely almost exclusively outdoors, right? Um, and, uh, in, in which, uh, I think in the, in the case of soccer, right? Kids were, um, uh, the at, student athletes were under different rules, right? To, to, um, in, in terms of their play, in terms of reinforcing some of the, um, some of the, uh, safety measures. You know, the difference, of course, with basketball and hockey, they're indoors, right? They're, they're contact sports, right? The kids are close to one another. Um, I, you know, for those, uh, you know, people in the public, parents, others who have concerns about that, that it's, that they're given the rising, uh, rates of, of COVID infection, not so much in schools, but at least in the community, what, uh, measures are being taken to, um, mitigate those, those conditions?
Yep. So, great question. Um, so the MIA, uh, when the state approved winter sports, they kind of passed it on to the MIA double A. Uh, the MIA double A, for every sport, they have a sport committee made up of athletic directors, principals, school administrators, coaches, uh, for that particular sport. Um, those, for example, I'm on the rest of the committee. Uh, for those committees, they then had to come up with safety modifications, uh, for that particular sport. So every sport has a whole list of modifications to their sport. They then had to go to the COVID nineteen MIA double A task force and the MIA double A sports medicine committee. Um, and they had to more or less state their case, uh, to those committees that these are, these are the modifications we came up with. And I know for a fact that, um, I, I believe both basketball and hockey got denied at first. So they had to go back to the drawing board, come up with more form modifications until the sports medicine committee ultimately approved of them. COVID nineteen task force approved of them, the board of directors approved them. And, and that's what each, um, sport has to follow the modifications that were designed for them.
Okay. So it's safe to say that both basketball and hockey will.
They'll be different.
Look a little different, like soccer, fall. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, exactly. They'll, they'll definitely be different.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. That's helpful. And then for Tom, um, I just, uh, Tom, I really appreciate, um, well, I appreciate the work you and, and Brendan are doing under these extraordinary circumstances to keep kids engaged in, in your areas, uh, you know, of the extracurricular activities. But I just, I was talking to Doug earlier this week and, um, just something for future conversation or, or future, uh, meeting, um, you know, if, if it's of interest to my colleagues. I'd also really love to, uh, have a conversation about the impact of, uh, you know, the pandemic on arts in the curriculum, across the curriculum. Um, uh, you know, from the visual arts and music to, um, to theater and, and dance to the extent that we have it. Um, I know that, um, like so many other areas of the curriculum, uh, so many things have been upended this year. And if there are things that, uh, the school committee can, can do to help, uh, recover some of the, um, what's been lost, um, in arts education in the curriculum. Um, I think that's an important discussion that I, I'd love to have, um, with you and, and, uh, the arts educators across the district.
Yeah, Greg, I mean, I, I got three hours on that right now, so whenever, whenever you're ready. Whenever you're ready, I, I'd love to, I'd love to, to do that. But at the same time, again, I don't want to take a lot of time i- in this meeting. But I will say that the, the art, visual art and, and music teachers in this district have done a fantastic, like, uh, unbelievable job in taking what they normally do and having to literally throw it out the window and start completely fresh at a time when the state just released new art standards, um, about sixteen months ago. We were, we were all last year up until Mar- well, through March, we did it through the whole year. We were working with those new standards, revamping our curriculum, writing our, rewriting curri- I mean, we were, we were buying in on all of that. And then this all hit and then we had to, you know, the elementary teachers are teaching remote and I've been observing them teaching remote classes. I mean, it's a completely different curriculum when you're doing that. The middle school music teachers had to throw out everything they've done and do something completely new in order to fit in the middle school schedule model. Um, you know, at the high school level, we still can't sing inside. Uh, you know, I mean, all, you know, you know, all the modifications and, and requirements that the state's put on us, rightfully so. But, you know, we've had to adapt those. So a- as much as it's been a struggle to the normal, um, what the adaptations and the creativity and the improvisation that our teachers have had to make, um, not only during the day, but also in, you know, extracurricular, you know, the, the fact that Will's able to put a show on completely remote and still engaging our, our students that, that have a passion for costume and a passion for set design and a, and a passion for sound and video and, and all those things that he does in a live setting. To be able to still do those remote and engage those, it's not easy. So, I mean, the, the staff has gone above and beyond, uh, to keep kids engaged, knowing that hope, you know, we'll be able to get back to, back to normal, um, very soon and, and, and be able to push us forward in everything, both curricular and extracurricular. So thank you for that question and, um, you let me know when you want to have that conversation and we can have it.
Yeah, thank you. So important. Thank you, Tom.
Yes, Mike.
So I neglected when I was talking before, and I did want to recognize Will and Tom. Uh, you know, although I had no kids that were ever in any sort of performing arts program at the high school, they were primarily doing athletic. I've been to enough things that it, it still astounds me what you have put together over the years. It, and it doesn't surprise me how well you're doing now, given the circumstances. But we are so blessed to have such an incredible set of programs for us to go to or for our kids to view and participate in. So my, my deepest gratitude to you for all the work that you do. It's, it's incredible. You should be very proud.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Tom.
Hi, uh, and thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to join, uh, Greg and, and Mike in, uh, in their, in their comments about, uh, the, the performing arts. And I also wanted to, um, add my emphasis into Greg's thought about having us, having us here directly, uh, Tom, from, um, from, from not only a presentation from you, but maybe the opportunity to bring some of the, uh, performing arts to teachers in. Uh, I think it would be a wonderful lesson for this, the committee, frankly, as well as the community, uh, to hear in a, um, in a profound way, the types of adjustments that, um, well, frankly, obviously we know that all teachers are making. But in particular, um, uh, uh, performing arts, uh, you know, teachers that, um, there's certainly, uh, you know, there's, there's always an expectation around, you know, some of the general ed, uh, teachers and the, and the, the core, uh, content areas. But just as important as we know, especially in our community, and the deep value that we have for arts, arts education, um, and, and, and music education, type of, uh, the type of things that are continuing to happen in extraordinary ways by extraordinary, uh, you know, teaching staff. Um, I would, would love and I'll certainly add, as I said, add to Greg's thought and then reach out to, um, Amy and, and Doug to get something on a future agenda. I would love, not only for this community to hear, for this committee, but for the community at all to hear exactly, uh, the types of extraordinary work, uh, you, how your, how your teachers are, are doing. I would love to hear that.
Hey, looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I just so, um, Greg and Tom know that, um, I've talked to Doug and I do think that we are planning on, um, inviting some teachers and students to a future meeting. Uh, so more to follow on that, but, uh, great idea. And again, I echo it, what everybody has been saying, you know, phenomenal job by everyone. We appreciate all your hard work. Any other questions or comments for, uh, Brendan or Tom? Okay, seeing none. Uh, moving on with the agenda. Uh, subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. Uh, we met at our weekly meeting last Thursday, um, and as Christine reported, we finalized the NRT MOA, uh, for fiscal year, um, twenty and, uh, twenty-one. Thank you. And, uh, we discussed COVID-related expenses to date, um, and what COVID-related expenditures may look like in fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, we also continued discussions about the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And Christine provided us with a draft schedule for the budget, which was a, a great useful tool. And, uh, it's just nice to be able to track those dates and try and stay as close as possible to them. Um, so good idea with that. And then Bob Shiroli just, uh, provided us with a facilities update. Um, that's it for finance and facilities. Labor and personnel, Colleen? No, Tom, sorry.
Uh, thank you. Um, and Colleen, it is a more than, uh, it is a more than welcome to you. Happy to hand that off, Colleen. Um, no, anyway, so, um, we have been, we have been meeting, uh, uh, weekly, um, as well. However, our weekly meetings, uh, at this point, probably more out of habit than out of necessity, which is some good news. Um, we've been discussing and hearing reports from, uh, from Doug and Kara and, and Christine, uh, around, um, around how some of the MOUs are performing, uh, from, from their, from their perspective, as well as getting feedback on some of the types of things that we, uh, may be collectively needing to look at, to review and revise in, in coming, um, coming weeks and months. Um, so there is, the, the goodness is we don't have a, a particular, uh, matter on our plate right now, but we are, uh, working to try and to, um, stay in touch with the, the types of priorities that, of things that are, you know, that are, that are happening to make, to make sure, um, that we're on the same page, uh, with both the administration and the faculty on, um, uh, the types of extraordinary work that everyone needs to do in these, in these, in these times. So, um, just like we talked about moments ago with, um, with regard to the, the, the arts and music, uh, staff, uh, the entire staff is certainly performing a yeoman service, um, that has, would have never been expected, um, of, of, of the teachers and school staff of any stripe, uh, until these, uh, until these, these crazy days of the, of twenty twenty. So, um, I'm sure we will have some things to report in, 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 with some specificity in coming weeks, but, uh, but, uh, but not at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Student Services, Darcy.
Um, yes, so we, we met last, uh, Wednesday, um, to review the teacher survey data that, um, has, was collected through the teacher survey. And then, um, Doug also shared the results from the parent survey, which we will be, uh, discussing tomorrow. Um, in addition to that, um, Doug has also shared the survey results with, uh, the school leaders and, um, and other curriculum leaders. And so they will be reviewing it at, uh, school level leadership meetings. And then we should have, um, we're going to meet weekly until, in order to compile, um, do some data analysis, compile it and be able to share it out.
Thank you, Darcy. Uh, Policy and Communications, that's Colleen.
Uh, yeah, we met, uh, last Friday, uh, the fourth, and, uh, we went over and reintroduced our mission statement that we had, um, sort of restated in twenty nineteen when we became Policy slash Communication Subcommittee. Uh, we talked about, uh, sort of, uh, focused on communications. We don't have any pending policy updates to address right now. But we talked a lot about, um, digging into how we can, um, improve our communications and sort of broaden, um, our effect there. Uh, we have a workshop, um, as we all know, on Saturday. And, uh, Amy has invited Dorothy Presser from the, um, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And we're hoping that we might get some guidance there from Dorothy just to, to sort of guide us in the way that what school committees can, um, and should focus on in terms of communication and. um and should focus on in terms of communication and really social media presence. Um, we also, um, we're very excited to talk about the possibility of looking to um high school and maybe even college interns to help support our town communications um and just, you know, focus on uh the district needs there. Um, that's always a challenge and um they're being sort of spread thin right now. And so that that was just one avenue that we talked about. Um, so more to come on that, um, evolving uh conversations. And we meet again, I think not till the end of uh sort of the third week in January, but um holidays are coming and it's been difficult. So look forward to that.
Great. Thank you, Colleen. Um, next on the agenda, future dates and agenda items. Uh, next school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January twelfth, um at seven thirty. Uh, school committee comments. I I'll just start with uh Colleen because you're first in my block on Zoom.
Uh, well, uh, so we don't need till the twelfth, so I'm, I guess I would just want to wish everyone um happy holidays. I know Hanukkah is is coming up very soon and um and Christmas as well and and New Year. So wishing all of our families happy holidays in whatever way that they can safely and um lovingly experience whatever that means for them this year. And I guess um just to um be grateful for all the things that we do have. Um, there's been a a large focus on what we don't have, of course, but um we all, you know, we all obviously have a lot. And uh, we're sitting here right now with each other, talking about things that we that we can and do. Um, so that's always, for me, that's always a positive, um, that we talk about, you know, the things that can happen. So um, it's a great focus to end the year. So um, thank you to all of you and thank you to our community in our district for for just showing up every day and for their family and for their their family and their commu- or friends and their community. So happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Colleen. Um, uh, Mike?
Sure. I'm gonna put Doug on the spot, as I usually like to do anyway here. But um, Tom was not at our labor and personnel meeting this morning, so a lot of stuff Tom mentioned, we discussed. And then near the end, we started talking about our things going with the teachers and things of that sort. And um, and then Doug shared a story with us that I think kind of brings a little perspective to what we're all doing and all the struggles we're dealing with. And it related to a visit he recently had at the Doyle School. So I wanted to ask Doug if you wouldn't mind sharing some part of that to everyone.
Sure, I'd I'd be happy to. So I had the uh, the good fortune uh to visit Doyle last week. They were a little short-staffed. So I went over to help out. Uh, Lynn O'Neal was over there helping out, but um, so from the um, you know, the nurse answering the front door to uh the school secretary was helping out in a class, you know, Shannon, when I, when I went into the building, um, someone had said, well, Shannon Blacker, our Doyle principal, is down the hall. And when I walked down the hall, I heard someone uh, you know, yell out over the curtain in the bathroom. Um, she was changing a student who, you know, needed to have a a new set of pants put on. And uh, so the student was just talking a blue streak, was perfectly fine, had a little mask on. But he walked out with a pair of sneakers uh in his hands, no, not on his feet, right? And he walked out and simply uh passed me the sneaker and said, like, picked up a foot and said, like, uh, let's let's get this shoe on this foot. I have recess, like, let's get this going, right? So it's a little bit of a reminder, right, um, of why we're all here, right? And so, you know, this student was um, he's just doing a great job, was not, for all of the stress um with the uptick in COVID at the school, there was little, to any, I mean, there was no visible carryover to the students and how um happy they were and how um loved and cared for they were by all faculty and staff, which was just so reassuring and heart-filling and amazing. So to Shannon and all of the teachers at Doyle, um, and for all of the work um that all of our faculty and staff are doing every day, um, I think we all thank you, right? So thanks.
Thank you, Doug. That that made an impact to me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
It's a great story. Darcy?
Um, yes, I'd I'd just like to wish everyone happy holidays and um and um again, kind of piggybacking what Colleen said, we have a lot to be grateful for. And, you know, I I think we can, starting to see the light maybe at the end of the tunnel. Um, so we can just hang in there and continue to work together and and try to stay positive and keep moving forward.
Thank you, Darcy.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom?
Uh, thank you. I I I would actually just like to um uh add on to everything that that Colleen said. She said it in such an extraordinary um and expressive and thoughtful uh and loving way. There's no, 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 no better words. Thank you, Colleen, for expressing those. I'm in.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, Greg?
Yeah, thank you, Amy, and I I totally agree. Uh, really nice sentiments and happy holidays to our, all of our staff, for uh students and their families. And and thank you, um, everyone for pulling together and and maintaining a spirit of community and collaboration amid really difficult circumstances. Um, and uh, really proud to be part of a community uh like Wakefield. And uh, and thank you, Mike and Doug, for sharing that story. That was a a wonderful uh, a wonderful image to go into the holidays with.
Thank you, Greg. Suzie?
Um, so yeah, I'd I'd like to echo a lot of kind of the themes. Uh, Colleen stating, you know, let's stay focused on what we do have, I think is just so important right now. Um, and so I I think that's just a a nice thing to to think about and and to consider and to remind ourselves, whether it's be sports or the theater, what what we are doing, we're still doing great things for our kids. It's not the same. Um, but we are, we're making things happen. And we're making things happen because teachers and staff have been willing to work really hard. Um, and I think we, parents out there, um, really wanted to see our kids in school this fall, and it happened. It's happened. We've still got our kids in school, and it's because teachers are showing up and staff is working hard. And I I just want to say, I really appreciate that work being done by teachers and and administrators because I know it's not easy and I know it's scary and I know it's different. Um, and I don't, I know I don't say enough um to teachers about how much I appreciate the the work, particularly this year. Um, I'm thankful to have my kids in school. They're happier there. Um, and so I thank you. And I wish all teachers and staff and my fellow uh committee members a happy holiday and a safe holiday.
Thank you, Suzie. Doug?
So I I think I'd just like to to echo, to say to our faculty and staff, um, thank you for all of your sacrifice, for all of your hard work. Um, you know, we we were talking this week with school committee members that, you know, our teachers are working parents as well and and how difficult it is to to kind of make all of this work, right? Um, and we wouldn't be here and we wouldn't be, um, we wouldn't be in school if it weren't for the, um, really the extraordinary efforts of all of our faculty and staff. So from all of the administrators in the district, um, to all of our faculty, staff and families, thank you for your support and for your ongoing efforts. Um, and to everybody, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Well, it's really hard to go last. But thank you all so much. I echo everything that everyone said. Um, please to uh students and staff and to our community, just be safe and I hope you have a wonderful holiday. Uh, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
We do. Uh, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of December eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Ms. Pressel?
Yes.
Ms. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Dr. Burns?
Yes.
And Mr. Liakos?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you so much for joining and good night.
Happy holidays.